Ready, Renata?
Thank you, Marty. Good evening, everybody. It's Wednesday, March 9th, 2022. It's 6:30 PM, and this is a regular meeting of the Moraga Town Council. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Government Code, Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. This meeting will be held via teleconference only and will not be physically open to the public. Town Council members and staff are teleconferenced into the meeting by audio under video, and the meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar. Members of the public may observe the meeting by watching or listening to the meeting through live stream or Zoom. Live verbal public comments may be made by members of the public joining the meeting via Zoom. Zoom access information is provided on the website. Use the raise hand feature during the public comment period for the agenda item you wish to address. All right, and since we are on Zoom, let's do a roll call. Councilmember Macar.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Onoda.
Here.
Councilmember McClure.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolicky.
Here.
And Mayor Sauce is here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Cynthia, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cynthia. All right, next item is special announcements. There are none. Next is proclamations and presentations, and we have a few of those tonight. So what we're going to do on the proclamations is we'll do the proclamation. We'll take public comment and then give council members the opportunity to comment at the end. So the first, and we will go around the horn to read the proclamation as we have traditionally done so that all council members can participate. So first is a proclamation honoring Brian South for 20 years of service to the town of Moraga. We're fortunate to have Brian with us, and I believe he is in the meeting. Great. Brian, is there anyone else that we need to let in for this?
Uh, no.
Okay, wonderful. So we'll read the proclamation, and if we could go in order, Sona, Teresa, Mike, Steve, then me, and then do laps that way. All right, Sona, do you mind kicking us off with the first whereas clause?
Yes, I'm sorry.
You've not done this before, I'm sorry.
I have not.
My apologies, it's my bad. We each do a whereas clause, and we go in order until we're done. So you'll go first, you'll do the first whereas clause, you'll end at the end, and then Teresa will pick up, and then Mike, and then Steve, and then me, and then we'll be back to you.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just running into some technical issues.
Okay, can you see the proclamation?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I could give a little intro and give Councilmember Macar a chance to bring it up.
Yeah, if Marty can send it to me directly, that everything on the website is down, and that's how I access.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, so why don't we, John, if it's okay, why don't, we'll just, we'll just start. So to give us a high sign when you're in.
Sure.
Are we okay if we start without you?
Sure, I'll try to figure this out.
Okay, no worries. Okay, thank you. Teresa, please start us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proclamation honoring Brian South for 20 years of service to the town of Moraga. Whereas Brian South was born in Lawrence, Kansas in October 1980, and later moved to Moraga with his family, attending Moraga schools, and graduated from Campolinto High School in 1999, and?
Whereas although Brian excelled at teaching, tennis, and a variety of other jobs, he knew at an early age that he wanted a career in law enforcement and began as a police cadet with the Moraga Police Department in May 1997, and?
Whereas Brian left MPD in 1999 to go to college after establishing a reputation for his hard work, volunteerism, and for wanting to work with and help the Moraga community, and?
Whereas Brian returned to MPD in 2000 as a cadet and attended the Basic Law Enforcement Academy at Los Medanos College for 19 weeks at his own expense to pursue his career dreams, and?
Whereas Brian successfully began his career as a police officer when he was hired as a reserve police officer on August 28th, 2001, and worked as a volunteer to protect our community and as a probation counselor at juvenile hall until he was hired as a full-time officer on August 2nd, 2002, and?
Whereas, and an officer, Brian distinguished himself as a field training officer, training many new officers, and promoted to sergeant on July 5th, 2009, serving in a number of capacities, including as the department's detective, training manager, field training coordinator, and as president of the Moraga Police Officer Association for a number of years, and?
Whereas Brian was promoted to lieutenant on October 2nd, 2016, serving as second-in-command of the department, representing MPD throughout the town and in the county with distinction, managing investigations and patrol functions, and coordinating with outside agencies to help ensure the safety of our community, and?
Whereas Brian also served our community by coordinating support and contributions for the Special Olympics for many years, being a member of the Moraga Rotary Club, including as president for the past two years, and raising money to support the community violence solutions, which directly benefits juvenile crime victims and battered women throughout the county, and?
Sona?
Yep, I'm good. Whereas for the past 20 years, Brian has become the heart and soul of the Moraga Police Department, as he has welcomed and mentored many new officers that involved in every major case and incident addressed by the department in the past 10 years, and been a valued member of the Moraga community, always knowing, living, and supporting the ideal of giving back to the community, and?
Now therefore be it resolved that I, Renata Sauce, mayor of the town of Moraga, along with my fellow council members, do hereby honor Brian South for his 20 years of service to the Moraga community, his incredible dedication to the Moraga Police Department and ensuring that a sense of well-being and security was created and maintained for everyone in our community. Brian, congratulations. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
I would.
Yeah.
I would. First of all, as you know, Brian is continuing his, his service to our community and communities throughout the state in his new position with the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training. And that's why he's, he's not local tonight. He's, he's actually in Southern California on assignment. Good job. But, you know, when I say he's the heart, he was the heart and soul of our department, he kind of still is. We're, I think we talk pretty much every day and, and everything. But, you know, his, his sense of service to our community, and actually, when you think about his time as a cadet, stretches nearly 25 years. And I can't thank him enough. The number of people in our community who, who were touched by Brian, and I'm not talking about by Brian's handcuffs, but, but, but his work with victims and, and helping people who, who basically had run into trouble or had, had been crime victims or, or just needed our help, the, the list is just too extensive to even, even, you know, think about naming. And he's had such an incredible impact. Miss the guy, love to have him back anytime. I try, I try and entice him on a daily basis to, to come back home. But, but I, words can't even come close to thanking, thanking him enough. So I so appreciate the proclamation in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, is there any public comment on this proclamation? All right, why don't we do council member comments, and then Brian, give you an opportunity to, to speak if you'd like. Councilmembers. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to report that all of my interactions with Brian have been positive. I never touched those, those handcuffs. And, you know, today I, I searched the La Miranda Weekly records, and there are lots of stories that include Brian or talk about Brian or focus on Brian, and they're all really positive stories. Community-related, and, and to me, Brian epitomizes that community peace officer, perfect for a town like Moraga. And I, you know, without question, I think if that can be, that, that his talent can be applied broader across the straight, state, at least as much as possible. What a, what a fine impact that he, he will represent. And, and what a fine representative he will be for Moraga. Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you, Steve. Other comments? Mike?
Yes, thank you. First of all, Brian, thank you for your 20-plus years of service on the Moraga Police Department. Not only do you have the expertise as a police officer, a sergeant, and a police lieutenant, to me, what will stand out is the way that you fit the character and culture of our community in so many ways, and that's, to me, the most important characteristic of almost any staff person, especially our police. He is integrated into our community and especially in our schools, and has a positive impact, and I've heard so many positive comments about Brian. Additionally, recently, Chief King had credited Brian with taking the lead and obtaining a new grant to find a new police officer to focus on vaping and tobacco and other issues at our school. So that's just tremendous, as we try to find nickels around here. And then finally, Brian had this small little side project called a Rotarian. He was president two times, and if you know how that happens, everybody takes a step back, and Brian was new and he didn't know, so he got to be president twice. So a savvy Rotarians know to take two steps back. But seriously, he was a true leader as a president and as a member. And, and Brian, you are a Rotarian in every way of the word, so I'm so proud of that. I must say, I'm disappointed for our community to lose all of your valuable input, but we're still going to be in touch, and we will still benefit in your new role. And I am personally very happy for you that you get to take the next step in your career. Sometimes that just happens. So Brian, congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you, Mike. Any other, Sona?
I just have, have already said really wonderful things, and just echoing my congratulations and thank you to you. Our first introduction was when you recruited me to participate in the Toys for Tots event, and I'm so glad I did and could see you in action with the Rotary Club, just seeing your passion and advocacy. Even during COVID, you were able to get so many people to participate in that fundraiser, and just was, was really a great introduction for me to the town and to the council, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Sona. Teresa?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, Brian, I think of you as a mild-mannered person who leads from behind, and I've seen that many times, and Moraga is going to miss you, but I know that you're taking part of Moraga with you, especially since you grew up here. And, you know, you're always welcome back, of course. Good luck on your future.
Thank you, Teresa. And Brian, if I can just add, I mean, I've, my interactions with you, I've always found you to be kind, ever patient, and so easily approachable, and modest and unassuming. I mean, it's all, with you, it's all about serving the public and making Moraga and whatever community you're in a safer place. This is obviously a big loss for this town, but this is good for the state of California, because the state police will now have someone teaching and instilling in others the values of service above self, empathy, integrity, and dedication to the community. So thank you for your decades of exemplary service to Moraga, and I wish you all the best in this next chapter of your law enforcement career. Thank you, Brian. And with that, would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you very much. Well, Madam Mayor and honorable council members, thank you so much for the honor of a proclamation. I didn't see that coming, and I really, really appreciate not only the proclamation, but the very kind comments from all of you. I am very grateful to have had the opportunity to serve Moraga and, and especially work with the amazing team that we have at Moraga PD. The men and women are police officers that are working day in and day out on the street. Are, they're doing the real work, and I'm really grateful to have been a part of that family. Moraga will always have a special place in my heart, as some others have said, that's for sure. But I especially want to thank Chief King. He told me I was going to be blushing. He knows I'm not a fan of being center of attention, so this, you know, he did a good job with that, but, but I do want to thank him very much for his leadership and his friendship. I literally could not have asked for a better partner these last seven-plus years. He is an integral part, and when he says the heart and soul, he really is the integral part of the department, and I would not, would not have asked to be side by side with anybody else, and I appreciate all of his, his support as well. So thank you once again for the honor.
Thank you, Brian. So Marty will?
We, we got that taken care of.
Oh, well, you're a step ahead of me as usual, John. Thank you. Okay. So you're all set. Brian, thank you so much. Great to see you, and, and don't be a stranger.
Definitely not.
With this, because with the, with the next proclamation.
Oh, right, okay. Don't go anywhere.
I'll stay.
Okay, great. Next agenda item is proclamation honoring Cliff Doctorman. In addition to Brian, is there anyone else that we need to let in?
I don't believe so. There's going to be Rotarians watching on the livestream, but not, not attendees.
Okay, and they, and they can have the opportunity to comment during public comment on this. All right, so let's go again in the same order with each council member. Sona, can you kick us off, please?
Yes, and can someone remind me how to pronounce the last name correctly?
Doctorman.
Thank you. Whereas Cliff Doctorman moved to Moraga in 1994 and worked extensively to make not only Moraga, but the world a better place for everyone, and?
Teresa, you're on mute.
I'm so sorry.
No worries.
Whereas in a life, in a lifetime association with Boy Scouts, he was the youngest Eagle Scout in history and received three of the organization's highest honors: the Distinguished Eagle, Silver Antelope, and Silver Beaver, and?
Whereas Cliff's professional life included 40 years in higher education administration, 20 years each at the University of California in Berkeley and at the University of Pacific in Stockton, California, and?
Whereas Cliff joined the Rotary Club of Berkeley in 1958, was a member of the Rotary Club of Stockton, and joined the Rotary Club of Moraga in 1994, and?
Whereas Cliff was one of three men selected by then Rotary International President Clem Renor to design a new program for health, hunger, and humanity, which led to the first polio eradication effort in the Philippines. And Cliff continued and expanded this effort with a pledge in 1981 to give a gift to all children in the world to be polio-free and raised $240 million for that cause, and?
Whereas in 1992, 93, he became the world president of Rotary International under his theme "Real Happiness is Helping Others", and traveled the world to speak to Rotary Clubs, high government officials, and many distinguished groups, and?
Whereas Cliff was a wonderful orator and was a highly sought-after speaker for organizations all over the world, allowing him to speak to many or to more Rotary Clubs than anyone else in the world, and?
Whereas Cliff served as a director of the board of the Rotary Club of Moraga every year, helped with service projects, fundraiser, was a mentor to all club members, and was the visionary behind the All-Access Playground at the Moraga Commons Park, and?
Whereas Cliff was honored as Moraga's Citizen of the Year in 2014 for all his contributions to the Moraga community and worldwide, and reflecting his accomplishments, his character, and the high regard in which he was held, and?
Whereas the opportunity to listen to Cliff speak was time well spent. His laugh was infectious, his message always uplifting, his joy of life contagious, his humor disarming, and his message is always true. Real happiness is helping others. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Renata Sauce, mayor of the town of Moraga, along with my fellow council members, do hereby honor Cliff Doctorman for his many contributions to the Moraga community and around the world, and for his invaluable leadership and dedication to service over his long and meaningful life. Thank you, everyone. Brian, would you like to say a few words on behalf of Rotary before we open to public comment?
That would be great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as the president of Rotary, I know I speak, Moraga Rotary, I know I speak for the entire club, that we were just so honored to have had Cliff as a member of our club. With, you heard how, what a dignitary he was in Rotary International around the world, and he was, Moraga Rotary was his home club, and so we had the real benefit of, of his wisdom, and we really do miss his presence, but his legacy will always be there and be with us. And as part of that, at our last board meeting, the board voted to make him an eternal member of the board, and so he will always be listed on the Board of Directors in perpetuity for the Moraga Rotary Club. So thank you for this proclamation honoring him, and I know all the club members appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. All right, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? All right, I don't see any hands. Okay, closed public comments. Councilmembers. Mike?
Yes, thank you. I am Rotarian, and Cliff was one of the first people I met as a new member, and I would sit to him, sit with him at the lunches, and I'd learn so much. So whenever we had a new member or a prospect, make sure they sit next to Cliff. That was the key. I was always impressed with his knowledge, his passion, and his insights. Cliff has been a Rotarian for over 60 years and has served the less fortunate around the world. As one of the leaders to make eradication of polio a global goal, which has been nearly realized as we speak, there's only a few cases left out there. And for perspective, polio vaccines have been administered to 3 billion children. That's billion with a B. 3 billion children in 122 countries. I find that amazing. Locally, it was Cliff who was trying to think of a 50th-year anniversary project for our Moraga Rotary Club, and he came up with the idea for the All-Access Playground, suitable for all abilities and all people. It took a sea of many people to make this happen, and it was Cliff's vision that began us on this journey. A truly special person, not just Moraga, not just the United States, but around the world. Thank you, Cliff.
Any other council members? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. We all seem to be reticent to tonight. You know, I really value my brief interactions at Rotary Club meetings and at Moraga Royale with Cliff. You know, he and Margaret De Priester were made quite a force at the Moraga Royale while they were both there. And I, you know, in the lunchroom, you know, Cliff, Cliff was just, you know, like, he, he held court. And it wasn't that he, he was, he was egotistical about it. He was just a very gregarious, outgoing guy, and, and, you know, between he and Margaret, you had two of those, you know, the shakers and movers of Moraga there. You know, his life was, was one that we can all admire, and I, our community was blessed to have Cliff as a member. I'm very happy that we, we can, we can say that, and, and I will cherish his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, um, I, if I may say a few words, I mean, I unfortunately did not know Cliff, but I certainly knew of him and of the imprint that he made on our community and on the world. His efforts towards eradicating polio are legendary, and he leaves behind a powerful legacy of service and deeply caring for the well-being of other people. So this community is fortunate to have had Cliff in our orbit for so many decades and will honor his memory by redoubling our own efforts to helping others. So thank you, Cliff. Thank you, Brian, and again, we honor Cliff Doctorman tonight. Okay, with that, we move to our last proclamation, a proclamation honoring the Moraga Garden Club, and I want to welcome Bobby Preston, Julie Stagg, Penny Woolworth, Janice Lu, and Jessica Fleming. With apologies if I'm supposed to ask someone else to be admitted. Please come on in if, if I, if I miss someone.
Marty, are you letting them in?
She is.
I certainly am.
Okay.
Taking more than one attempt sometimes.
Thank you.
See, Bob, we see Bob.
Bobby for a minute.
We lost people.
Bobby's here.
Oh, okay. Now I see.
They're muted. There we are.
All right, let me know, Marty, when everyone's with us, that's supposed to be with us.
I believe that is it.
Okay.
Brianna would know for sure.
Are we good, Brianna?
Two, three, four. Jessica Fleming would be the fifth, and there she is.
There she is.
That's everybody.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for coming tonight. This is, this is fantastic. All right, we will now read a proclamation honoring the Moraga Garden Club. Sona, can you kick us off?
Whereas in November 2020, the Moraga Garden Club launched the Moraga for Monarchs Initiative, led by co-founders Bobby Preston and Julie Stagg, that resulted in the installation of a 2,600-square-foot monarch habitat and demonstration garden at Rancho Laguna Park, and?
Whereas the Moraga for Monarchs Initiative was made possible through significant community support that included over 2,870 volunteer hours and donations exceeding 92,000, and?
Whereas the monarch habitat includes over 600 plants, including 95 different natives and drought-tolerant varieties to increase the habitat for pollinators, creating environmental, educational, and artistic benefits at Rancho Laguna Park, and?
Whereas the tireless commitment of the Moraga Garden Club spanned over a 15-month period during the height of the global pandemic, the Moraga Garden Club adjusted to changing recommendations and guidance, continually modifying protocols and procedures to ensure the safety of all, and?
Whereas the past president of the Moraga Garden Club, Penny Woolworth, provided exemplary, exemplary leadership in championing this effort and bringing this project to fruition, and?
Whereas the habitat features beautiful artwork by local artists, including a magnificent, magnificent monarch sculpture over six feet tall that was donated to the town by the Moraga Garden Club, becoming part of the town's permanent collection, and?
Whereas the habitat features a solar power fountain, state-of-the-art precise irrigation sightseeing benches installed around the perimeter of the garden, and extensive plant identification and interpretive signage, and?
Whereas the lasting environmental impacts of the project will benefit California's iconic monarch butterfly population and provide nectar to various pollinating species, and?
Whereas the habitat will provide public education by enabling the dissemination of public information and enabling community outreach through the availability of docent-led tours and education. and educational opportunities for youth and adults. And?
Whereas the habitat will serve as a representation of community effort and Moraga's spirit of volunteerism and dedication. And?
Whereas the completion of the monarch garden has enhanced and beautified Rancho Laguna Park, creating a lasting benefit for the Moraga community.
Whereas January, or June fifth, I'm sorry, I'm having an off night tonight, twenty-twenty-two will be recognized as Monarch Day is Moraga's, as the community celebrates this significant accomplishment with the Welcome to the Garden event scheduled at Rancho Laguna Park.
Now therefore be it resolved that I, Renata Sauce, Mayor of the Town of Moraga, along with my fellow council members, do hereby honor the Moraga Garden Club and project co-founders Bobby Preston and Julie Stagg for their vision and dedication to creating the Moraga for Monarchs Pollinator Habitat and Demonstration Garden at Rancho Laguna Park. Thank you. Congratulations. So what we'll do is we'll take public comment and then council member comments. And then if anybody from the garden club wishes to speak, we welcome you to do that. All right, do we have any members of the public who would like to say a word? All right, seeing no hands, council member comments. Oh, before we do that, Brianna, did you want to say anything?
I'll just say a really quick congratulations. If we could fit more faces on the screen tonight, we would. But these five ladies are just wonderful human beings. And, you know, when we talk about the volunteer spirit of Moraga, this project just walks the walk and talks the talk. And on a personal note, I will say just what a joyous adventure, journey it's been working with these ladies over the, the past two years. You know, this project was a beacon of hope in the middle of COVID, brought some tears, some happy ones, some really late-night stressed-out ones. But, you know, we did it. We're here. This is an amazing project. And, and I thank you guys from the bottom of my heart, so.
Thank you, Brianna. All right, council members, any would like to say a word? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ladies, and I'm sure lots of gentlemen too, what a terrific effort. And it shows that sculpture is gorgeous. The flowers, the plants are amazing and inspirational to all of us who want to have gardens that are native. So fantastic job. Congratulations. And congratulations to all of us in Moraga to have that in our park.
Other council members. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I happen to, you know, have raised a couple of daughters here in Moraga. And, and a lot of their youth was spent annually heading down to Pacific Grove to see the monarchs there. And that was a real treat. And we did experience firsthand the decline in the visitors' population of the monarchs over recent years. And, and that was certainly a visible indication of something amiss. I, I don't know that the whole story is yet out. But, you know, what, what, what great, you know, benefits and, and I, you know, really admiration for Moraga citizens to grab hold of that. And not only create a waystation for monarchs as they migrate. And they're, what, what, what a journey these, these butterflies take, you know, multi-year and, and a super accomplishment. And not only do we have a waystation for them now and hopefully helping them out, it's a real asset for the town. A positive improvement. And it incorporated concrete foundations already at the park. So, you know, no additional concrete, other than for the, you know, the butterfly statue. But reusing that foundation, it also is a, is a real positive. And so I commend all of you. It was from being mostly observer, a little bit of volunteer, but mostly observer. Boy, what a, what a hectic schedule you guys put forth and work, work effort. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Son?
I want to really thank you for inspiring us during the height and peak of the global pandemic. I moved here during the pandemic. I go for regular walks at the Commons of Rancho Laguna, and I saw this, saw signs about this project and then started seeing the development. And it's just really inspiring during a time when there really wasn't a lot to look forward to or, or be excited about. And you, you made it happen and did it in a way that brought so many people together and energized by it. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Son. Mike?
Yes, thank all of you. This is just truly genius. I remember talking to Bobby and I said, how did you come up with this idea? I can never even dream something that's brilliant, just to be very honest. And Bobby's saying, well, Julie and I talked about the declining population and what can we do? And, uh-huh, we have, we have a project. So this is just fantastic, creating this habitat. And then that sculpture that you have of the butterfly. When I heard there was going to be a sculpture of something, I said, okay, great. And then I saw that. I mean, I've never seen anything like that. That's just beautiful artwork. So to me, I just want to say, this is Moraga, a community of volunteers working together, creative ideas, widespread community support, and at the end of the day, getting it done. I can't think of a better project that represents the character, culture, and ingenuity of our community in Moraga. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. I, you know, that, the butterfly habitat is truly a triumph of passion, of commitment, of ingenuity, and of dogged persistence. And it's a terrific example of an effort that drew from and drew together all parts of our community. And it was a strong and collaborative partnership between town service organizations on the one hand and the town government on the other. And it's, it's a thing of beauty. I mean, it, it's not only attractive to the monarch butterflies, but it's colorful, it's whimsical, and it is a work of nature's art. The butterfly statue is just a cherry on top of the sundae. And I'm pretty sure that soon it will be a regular stop for visitors to Moraga to go have their picture taken so it looks like they have their own wings. My ninety-three-year-old dad did that just yesterday, and it's going to be something that I treasure forever. So to everyone in the garden club, I thank you, and we look forward to what you're up to next. So, thank you. Would Bobby, Julie, any of you like to add a few words? Bobby?
You're all correct. It takes a village. And this was certainly the case for this project. I am so grateful to the town for its unwavering support from the very beginning, particularly Brianna and her fabulous staff, Kyle, Ruben, Jose, Raul, Justin. They were there every step of the sometimes extremely difficult way. We had an amazing contractor, Andy Bagary, the Moraga Park Foundation, and tons of volunteers from the garden club, but also the Moraga Service Clubs, the Scouts, and the community. And not just Moraga, we had volunteers from all over La Mirinda. This project truly did, as you said, Renata, create a camaraderie throughout the town. I was a beneficiary of that. I would not have otherwise known the four very good friends that you see here with me tonight but for this project. So for me, that was the, that was the cherry on top. The wing sculpture, which was the gift of Norm and Janet Pease, has resulted in selfies now from three to ninety-three. The very first selfie was a three-year-old. And everyone loves it. The mosaic caterpillars and ladybugs that are the gift to the artist Mary Gillis are little hidden surprise gems in the garden. If you haven't found them yet, you have to look closely because the plants are going to make it harder soon. We are so grateful that the town is so committed to protecting all pollinators, including monarchs. And we're very excited about welcoming everybody to the garden on June fifth. Will be a nice event. Thank you. And thank you to my four good friends who are sitting, waiting to say words. I love you all.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else? Julie?
I just wanted to say, you know, having grown up in this area, La Mirinda, but particularly Moraga's relationship with nature is priceless. It's so beautiful. So thank you to all, and that's with a capital A-L-L around us, who help facilitate the enjoyment of that relationship. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you. All right, well, thank you. Thank you all. And really appreciate you joining us tonight and congratulations. And thank you for that wonderful garden. All right. Good night. Okay, next, next agenda item is a presentation on SB thirteen eighty-three, Reducing Short-lived Climate Pollutants in California. And we welcome Judith Silver, who is driving this effort for Recycle Smart. And we in Moraga are the beneficiaries of Judith's work. So Judith, welcome and please take it away.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight and all the council members. I appreciate the invitation to be here to speak with you tonight about thirteen eighty-three. I love coming after the dedication of the monarch garden because this is just another way that we're trying to preserve our way of life and prosperity here for, you know, in California. So I'm Judith Silver. I've been with Recycle Smart for a couple of years. I'm the senior program manager. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about this law that consumes me every day. So thirteen eighty-three, SB thirteen eighty-three, it's the most significant waste reduction legislation to pass in California in the last thirty years. It establishes a target to reduce by seventy-five percent the statewide disposal of organic waste from two thousand and fourteen levels by two thousand and twenty-five. It also includes a target, a statewide target, that not less than twenty percent of currently disposed edible food be recovered for human consumption by two thousand and twenty-five. And as you can see from this slide, eighteen percent of food, of food waste represents eighteen percent of our waste stream. And the idea of focusing on getting organics out of the landfill makes sense from a waste diversion perspective and from a greenhouse gas emission reduction perspective. So this slide talks a little bit about how thirteen eighty-three affects pretty much everybody. It places obligations on local governments. It places obligations on facilities and on generators. I want to call out the Recycle Smart Board. So Moraga is a, one of the five members of Recycle Smart, or I should say six. So it's the La Mirinda Communities, Walnut Creek, and Danville, and some portions of unincorporated counties. So that's our, the county is our sixth member. And adopted a, an ordinance at their December meeting. This is a required ordinance by, of thirteen eighty-three to, that reduce, to, to take on the responsibilities of SB thirteen eighty-three. And the member agencies are not required to adopt this ordinance by reference. The ordinance compels generators to separate organics. That's, that's the main thrust of this bill, of this law, and to keep them from landfill. And it gives our agency the ability to request records and information to meet our reporting obligations on your behalf. The next slides lay out the responsibilities of Recycle Smart of our generators and the member agencies. But before we proceed, I just would like to call out that in almost every way, Recycle Smart and the member agencies are already in compliance. So we're in really good shape. I just want to make sure that is clearly conveyed. So the cornerstone of the law is the requirement that all generators, that's multifamily tenants, commercial businesses, students, residents, townhome residents, that everybody have the opportunity and a way to separate organics from landfill. And through our agency's franchise with Republic Services, we, we already have that. And our carts are already the right colors as prescribed in the law. So that's, that's a big plus for us. SB thirteen eighty-three describes specific actions that generators must comply with, such as the separation of organics from landfill, annual education of tenants about this requirement, and participation of certain businesses in food recovery. And I want to point out that with this law, multifamily tenants must also participate in food scrap and food soil paper diversion. Up until now, multifamily tenants could opt out and just have landscape trimmings, but that's no longer the case. And the ordinance gives our agency the right to inspect generators and to verify compliance and to enforce on them if that becomes necessary, beginning in two thousand and twenty-four. So now I want to turn attention to what our agency is doing for you and for the community. So thanks to the foresight of the Recycle Smart Board over the last ten years, we are currently in compliance with the existing collection approach that we've laid out, that we, that you all experience day to day. This is paid, already paid for through the rates and executed by our service partners, Republic Services and Mount Diablo Recycling. And I just want to say, this is in comparison to many jurisdictions, particularly in Southern California, who are really looking at some very new expensive costs to purchase trucks and carts and whatnot to implement the programs that this, that this law requires statewide. I also want to call out that this law, that recently in the last state budget, there was money put aside to be administered by PowerCycle through a block grant to assist local governments with, with implementation. And I really want to appreciate Brett Swain from your team and also all the other member agencies who applied on behalf of Recycle Smart. And most of those funds will come to Recycle Smart so that we can do some of the program implementation without having any rate, any, any significant rate impacts. So here are some of the things that Recycle Smart is working on. One of the things I just want to call out is that there is an opportunity for small businesses, if they generate less than ten gallons of organics weekly, to get a waiver. So we will be providing waivers to some small businesses, definitely not anyone who's in the food generating business. But this will bring some relief when we can justify it to some of the smaller businesses in our service area. Recycle Smart is required to educate each year about proper separation of materials and why this is important. And this includes things like food waste prevention, ways to make sure you, you know, shop your fridge first and that, that type of messaging. And we also want to give tools to businesses and such as like signage and educational videos and other technical assistance to help the businesses execute their obligation to educate their tenants about this law. There is a thing called a capacity analysis, which we're just launching in our office right now. And this is an, the idea here is that we're going to do an analysis of how, of how much we're, organics we've recovered and how we're going to find homes for that. That's on the processing side, is taken care of through our franchise. And we're also doing that for edible food recovery. So we're looking at ways that the infrastructure for recovered food exists and to make sure that we can find home, find ways to, to help businesses know where that food should go and how that should be handled properly. SB thirteen eighty-three requires annual route auditing. And so we just completed a pilot in, earlier in February to test a protocol that we used a contractor to help us develop. And we will be, this is an opportunity for us to provide educational feedback in the form of cart tags or emails back to residents or businesses. This is not meant to create a fine or, or, or anything like that. But it's a way for us to see, you know, are there, are there food scraps in the trash that we'd like to see in the organics? How can we convey that to the resident that this is where we'd like to see this? It's also an opportunity to say, hey, we don't want to see any batteries in your trash. So we're, we're very cognizant of a private. So we're very cognizant of privacy issues and we're doing this. We're not taking any pictures. We're trying to be very careful. But this is a requirement of the law and it's a great way for us to do some education and direct feedback about what we're seeing. And we are required to go to every route every year. We have 68 routes in our service area. So that's a bit of a lift. So to recap, we have passed this required ordinance. And over the next couple of years, we are going to be pushing outreach and education. And then in 2024, we have the obligation to enact enforcement if we need to. However, it's our feeling that we are, you know, we have a mature program. This is not new in our service area. Maraga has been doing this for a long time. We're not expecting there to be a lot of enforcement, but we need to be prepared for that, should that become something that we need to do. So SB 1383 is very prescriptive. There's a lot of record keeping and we're working with staff at each of our member agencies so that they understand their obligations to help us report on their, on your behalf so that we can give Cow Recycle what we need, what they need, so that they're satisfied with all of us. I want to call out one of the most interesting parts for us of 1383 is that we're now in the edible food recovery business. And we've been spending the last few years developing the relationships with edible food partners in our service area. And basically, covered generators, and I'll describe who a covered generator is in the next few slides, have to have a, like a service agreement in place such that if there is an opportunity to, to give extra food, if there is excess food, they know who to go to and they, and they know exactly what to do so that that food can be recovered. We have, that this aspect of the law has a monitoring and an enforcement piece associated with it. And we're very pleased that Contra Costa Health Services has agreed to partner with us and to serve in that capacity. And we're working on a contract with them to do that for us. And that's an excellent, you know, the right people to be in the business, in front of businesses and businesses already listen to them. So that's a very exciting development. This slide calls out who are the tier one and tier two type of businesses. And I'm just going to quickly switch to this next slide that talks a little bit more in detail. Tier one businesses are required now to be doing as much food recovery as possible. And these are sort of the larger, you know, supermarket type businesses, wholesalers, that type of thing. Tier two businesses are restaurants, local education agencies, smaller businesses, more prepared food, if you will. Tier ones are more about, you know, sort of more bulk, larger items. Okay, here's the one tier one business in Maraga. So I'm not too concerned. And I know that the Safeway Stores already has regular food recovery with the muffin people. So we're in good shape there. We just have to make sure that the service agreement is in place. And here is the list of the tier two businesses in Maraga. And you can see that they're mostly schools. And Brett actually asked me the question of like, well, we don't have any control over the schools. And because they're, you know, they're, they can do more, pretty much what they want to do. And so in terms of food recovery, we will make sure, it's our obligation to make sure that they have education, which we've already been sending them letters and making sure they understand that this is a requirement come 2024. If there happens to be a need for enforcement, if for some reason one of the schools isn't interested in participating in food recovery, we would then refer them to the state for enforcement, but we're not really expecting that to happen. And we've been working with St. Mary's College, developing that relationship and with the Maraga Country Club as well. So it's not a huge lift, especially in your community. There's many more restaurants in other places that, you know, in Lafayette and Walnut Creek who are covered under this law. So to turn my attention now to the responsibilities that still rest on the shoulders of the individual member agency, so your responsibilities in Maraga. There are a few, and I really want to appreciate all the staff in Maraga who have been helping us kind of get ready. And one of the things is the Cal Green requirement, which has been a program that we've had in place for a long time. And that's just going to continue on and that's going really well. And that's making sure that we're, making sure that construction demolition debris is recovered and that we can track that. And your staff is working with us on that. Afshan has helped put together the ordinance for the water efficient landscape ordinance that's required under 1383. So I know that's come before you and you've had yours, I think your second reading already. So that's wonderful. We've been working with Brett and Annie on making sure there's a clear understanding of the recycle content paper requirement, that all paper purchased by the city, all different departments, all types of paper need to have recycle content, or we need to be able to prove that it was too expensive. And, you know, and we've also been working with Cynthia on your environmental purchasing policy and making sure that the language there includes reference to SB 1383 and those obligations. So we're making great strides in Maraga. And I'm sure that, you know, that everything is in place. I'm not concerned about it. Lastly, I just want to call out another aspect of 1383 that does rest with the member agencies. And this is the obligation that, is the idea here is of closing the loop. So the idea is that each, based on population, each jurisdiction is required to purchase a certain amount of compost, basically, or an equivalent organic waste product to kind of drive demand for organic materials. And we worked with Republic Services to come up with a, kind of a way to, so that you don't have to purchase it directly yourselves, that the Republic, when they're selling the finished compost that we bring to their facility, well, that the folks who are purchasing that already will be buying that on your behalf. And that's a sort of a nice feature of SB 1383. It's a direct service provider feature. And that will save you from having to purchase 780 tons of finished compost, which has a market value of around $10,000. So that's, we're testing this out in year one. We assume, we're pretty confident that this will, will work for you and for all the member agencies and save you having to purchase that compost. So that's very good. We're very pleased about that. And then finally, I would be remiss if I didn't just sort of say that Cow Recycle does have the right to enforce on Recycle Smart and on each member agency if they're not satisfied with the work that we're doing. However, I feel like it's extremely unlikely. We're sort of, I wouldn't say a poster child, but our service area is very well respected for the forward thinking and way that we're already, all the communities in the Bay Area are so much farther ahead than places in Southern California. But I just want to make sure that I have articulated that. And that concludes my presentation. I know that's a lot. And so I'm happy to take questions and I can stop screen sharing.
Thank you, Judith. Yeah, if you stop screen sharing, that would be awesome. Thank you. Do we have any questions from council members?
Thank you. That was super helpful. Hopefully, this is just a quick, quick answer. For the record-keeping obligations, do any of that fall on the small businesses or commercial entities? Or that's at the municipal level?
That's at the municipal level. Yeah. Yeah, we have things we need to ask of small businesses, but there's no specific requirements. If a business is self hauling or back hauling their material, they do need to maintain records of where they bring that material. And so if we have the right to ask them for that. But we don't have a lot of that in our service area.
Thank you.
Other questions? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Truth, you know, thank you and thank you for the many years that there have been a lot of different programs in La Merinda related, or Maraga at least, that I'm familiar with, related to recycling. And I'm quite pleased with what we currently have. The question I have is, relates to balancing recycling food, organics, et cetera, with the fuel required to run the trucks around. And, you know, is there been any cost benefit analysis done comparing, comparing the two? Recognizing both have, you know, potentially significant impact on the environment. One of them we know has a significant impact on the environment.
Yeah, I mean, everything has a significant impact on the environment. I think, you know, one of the things that we don't talk about so much when we're talking about this law is that, yeah, I'm not really answering your question, but I just want to say this because I'm just thinking about it, is that everything we can do to keep material out of the landfill keeps our landfill open longer. And when, and luckily, there's, we actually have a fair amount of shelf life on the landfill at Keller Canyon landfill. But when that landfill does eventually get full, that's, then we're going to be driving really, really far to take, to take stuff to landfill. So that's sort of just another added benefit. But, I mean, in terms of, I mean, I would say if that's a concern, I would encourage you to do as much backyard composting as you have because then you can actually get a discount on your, on your bill. And that would keep all of those organics, you know, very, very close to home and reduce the amount of impact in that regard. But, you know, I, I don't really feel like I can, I would have to really think about that question. I don't.
Yeah. And I'm thinking at a more macro level where, for example, power, you know, if the analogy of using electrical power, the future may be more distributed power plants. And so are, would there be opportunities to have more local organic composting facilities where the collected materials are taken and composted? So I think what I'm hearing is that hasn't been seriously looked at or offset. And, you know, pretty soon, that diesel is going to cost that much more. It already is and it's going to get worse.
Right. Yeah. Well, I firmly believe that backyard composting is a good answer for you because that's going to help keep that. And then we do have a program that's pretty unique in our service area. I'm not sure if you're familiar with our food recycling project. There are about 500 businesses in our entire service area where food scrap, and I know there are some in Maraga as well, and food scraps are collected and taken to East Bay Mud to their anaerobic digester and they're co-digested there. And that creates energy and we actually share in a, in a, in a, energy share with East Bay Mud and helps power their plant. So that is, that is a very local program. It is true that the compost facility is pretty far away. So, but please understand it's not the individual trucks that are driving out to our compost facility that they are, everything is brought to our transfer station in Martinez. And then, you know, at capacity, those trucks are driving out. But yeah, it's, it's a thing. It's a thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member questions? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no hands, I will close public comments. Any council member comments? Mike?
I'll just say thank you. I want to thank you for everything you do. And, you know, I heard, you know, very high regard of Recycle Smart from council members and residents. So thank you.
Anyone else? Steve?
I just echo that, especially, you know, historically, so much, you know, we are a land of excess and so much of our food gets wasted. And we, you know, whatever we can do to reduce that is, I'm all for it. And I do, do, I do, we do have our compost in the side yard. So we're there.
Why am I not surprised?
Teresa?
Judith, thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you tell us a little, tell everyone a little bit about White Pony?
Yeah, absolutely. So White Pony Express is a local food recovery organization. And there's white, and you guys have muffin people in your service area, in our service area as well. But White Pony, we partnered with White Pony and got a food rescue grant from Cow Recycle. So they're using that money to help build the infrastructure so that they can, you know, do more food recovery. They are looking for volunteers. If you want to volunteer, you can go onto their website. You can sign up to get pinged when they need a food run. And that helps, you know, pick up food from, from the area. And yeah, they're very mission driven and we're really excited about our partnership with them.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to add that, you know, as I'm listening to you, Judith, and in my involvement with Recycle Smart over the last few years, I think this is an example, the organization is an example where pooling of resources and sharing of services among cities and towns is beneficial to each of our communities. So as you were saying, Judith, you know, Recycle Smart does procurement of recycling, composting and other services on behalf of Merinda, Lafayette, Maraga, unincorporated Contra Costa County and Walnut Creek. And it's making sure that all of its members are complying with the many state laws in this area. Now, if that compliance function was left to each of the separate jurisdictions, I think that would be particularly difficult. I think it would be inefficient. It would not be cost effective. And, and the, and compliance could be uneven because everybody adopts their own standards. So the fact that Recycle Smart is doing this on behalf of all of the member jurisdictions, I think, is cost effective and is beneficial to everybody who is in the Recycle Smart service area. So I just think that as this legislation on, on recycling, composting, organics, and who knows what else is coming down the pike from Sacramento, because this is 1383 is not the last thing we're going to see. I think this compliance role that Recycle Smart plays on behalf of the member jurisdictions is, is absolutely critical and important. And so Judith, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
All right. I guess that's it on that agenda item. Thank you, Judith. It was really good to have you.
You're welcome. Oh, thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you.
It was great to have you. All right. Thank you. The next agenda item, public comments and suggestions. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish the address, the council on items that are not on the agenda. Any, yes, Mike?
A point where, could I say a couple of words, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say on this agenda item here, you know, we're here to work for the residents of Marag and we're here to listen. We have in our protocols, civility to work with each other, staff and the residents. And we've been trying to, you know, double our efforts for civility here in town government. And I'd just like to say you have every right to criticize, to protest, to say what you'd like to say. But sometimes those comments seem to go a little bit over the line, if I'm being honest. So I would just like to ask residents, would you please make your points and try to redouble efforts on civility? And let's just have a conversation of community partners. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Any public comment? Any raised hands? I don't see any. Okay, then I will close public comments. Next agenda item, adoption of the consent agenda. Do council members, anybody want to pull anything? Mike?
Yes, 6.4.
6.4. Okay. Any others? Okay. Yes, Steve?
Ready to make a motion?
Please, thank you.
I move approval of the consent agenda items 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, 6.5, 6.6 and 6.7 as proposed.
A motion by Steve. Do we have a second from Councilmember Unoda? All right. Any public comments? No. All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Unoda?
Yes.
Councilmember Clor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilkie?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, that carries unanimously. Mike, 6.4.
Yeah, I guess there's a question in my mind of returning to in-person meetings sooner. I see the staff report and the letter attached as of February 2nd. I didn't see, though, the press release from the Contra Costa County Health Department on 2/9, effectively saying, 2/16, you know, there is no mask requirements. Further, I did not see the California Department of Public Health saying there is no further mask requirements, though people, you know, have options here. I'm hearing more and more questions about, okay, well, when's Maraga going to open up in person? So I wanted to pull it. You know, I think, you know, we're, we're ready. There's always risk. But if we're saying we're not having masks, Uh, there's always risk, but um, if we're saying we're not having masks indoor, the the schools are stopping masks this week. Um, they're going to have musicals at Campo. You can go in shopping malls, um, sporting events. So I I I would really like to suggest that um, we accelerate this in-person meeting process. And I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
Before we do that, um, I would invite Cynthia because spoiler alert, Cynthia had something to say about this in her report. So if you would, if you you can indulge the council and and do that piece of it now, I think it might answer your questions, Mike.
Yeah, so um, cities are starting to go back to in-person meetings. Although half of the cities in Contra Costa still are doing virtual meetings. Um, we are um, setting the goal for the March 23rd meeting to have that meeting be in person. Uh, but we do recommend that you adopt um, this um, uh, resolution because we're not quite sure what's going to happen in the future and we want to be ready should we need to go back to virtual meetings. So let's hope we don't. And um, we are kind of working on the protocols and the room setup. Um, and I believe I've spoke to most of you about that. And we don't have any pre-existing health conditions that prevent the council from gathering. So plan to meet at the council chambers at 6:30 on March 23rd.
And and if Cynthia, if if I may, um, I I think we need to adopt 6.4 in order to have this meeting be.
Yes, yes. And we will probably continue to bring that, this on a, you have to bring this every 30 days and we'll probably continue to bring this so that we can continue to have virtual meetings. And and I think that virtual meetings are going to be something that some of our commissions are going to want to continue to hold. And that some meetings we might find are um, a better way to um, get community input. So I think that it's it's opened up a new tool for us to use. So um, definitely the council, I think, needs to go back to in-person meetings. Um, but uh, this will be an option.
So i- if I understand what you're saying, Cynthia, that the, by adopting this declaration or or continuing to adopt it, it doesn't mean we have to do Zoom meetings. It just means that there is the option to do that.
Right. And we wanted, like I said, we also want to do that and we'll continue to do that for our boards and commissions and some of our community meetings that that we will be holding virtually.
Mike, are you, is the, does that?
I'm fine. I'm fine. Sorry for spoiler alert.
No, no, it was, it was a perfect segue into into that part of Cynthia's report. So we just, just, just took care of it more quickly in the meeting. All right, uh, Mike, would you like to make a motion to adopt?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent item 6.4.
My second.
Uh, motion, uh, Councilmember McClure, second, Councilmember Unoda, any public comments? Denise, you have public comment?
That was it.
That there be public comment, okay. Uh, I see no raised hands, uh, so bring it back, roll call vote. Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Unoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilkie?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, carries unanimously. The consent items are adopted. Okay, adoption of meeting agenda. Can I have a motion?
A point of order, um, Madam Mayor.
Mike?
I noticed last meeting and this meeting, there's been a change in the format of the agenda. Uh, it's it's small, but it's a change. And I'm just, you know, usually that would be a discussion and a vote by the town council. The the change is under reports. We used to have council members go first and then the um, the town manager. And now it's been switched. So I just want to understand um, what's changed here?
Um, I I did not, that that was not a substantive change. So I did not believe that it, I mean, it was something that was within the presiding officer's discretion. And um, the thinking behind that is that the town manager um, has, you know, important stuff for the community to hear and for us to either echo or further comment on. So um, I thought it was worth trying to have the town manager go first.
Yeah, I I I would recommend usually any change to the agenda structure is a council discussion and decision. I just think even though it's relatively small, um, I I think we should have that perhaps as a future agenda item if this is going to be permanent.
Well, we can, we can figure, we can figure that out whether that that actually is, my understanding was that was not required. So that's, that's why it was made without without discussion because it was a kind of a ministerial and not a substantive point. Would you like to make a motion to change the order?
Uh, I'll leave, it's just if this is going to be permanent, it's my opinion that there should be a discussion, but I'll leave it for now.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
Um.
I'm sorry?
So moved.
Thank you, Teresa. Motion, second, M- Macker, uh, Councilmember Unoda, motion, Councilmember Macker, second. Uh, a public comment? Roll call votes, Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Unoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Wilkie?
Yes.
And Mayor Sauce is a yes, the agenda is adopting unanimously. All right, reports are next. Town manager, please.
Great. So uh, mark your calendars, next meeting in person, that's the first thing. But I have wanted to talk to you a little bit more about calendars as well. So um, uh, earlier this year at your first January meeting, on January 12th, we distributed the uh, meeting calendar for the year. And that meeting calendar included um, the hold dates for the second and fourth Wednesday of the month for the regularly scheduled council meetings. And this year we did it a little bit differently and we asked you to hold the first and the third Wednesday of the month. Um, because we have quite a few special enclosed session meetings this this year in particular. And we've been having uh, a hard time uh, scheduling those meetings and finding times for those. So we're just trying to facilitate that process. Um, the reason why we have quite a few more meetings this year is we have uh, the housing element update and the Bollinger Canyon rezone. And those were, um, we have quite a few joint planning commission and town council meetings. We also have the um, traffic uh, study coming up. We're going to have a couple of meetings related to that. We have uh, labor negotiations and other closed session items. And the council has provided feedback that having those closed session items for 30 to 60 minutes before council meetings just really doesn't give us enough time. So we've asked you to put those meetings on hold, so we will let you know when something's scheduled. And if that meeting doesn't work for y'all, then we will go ahead and schedule it for another time. So if you could just do that. And I think that mostly this will be for the first, you know, um, through uh, the council recess, which is July 15th, because things, um, we we end up often uh, with the budget, just having a lot of items prior to that, that time. So we are, we'll be bringing um, the budget to you. We usually have like a a pre-budget discussion of general items and questions of what you want to want to fund. Um, we'll be looking to bring that to you in May. And we'll be looking to bring the CIP budget to you actually for discussion. Um, I think on April 27th, so that will come a little bit earlier. We want to make sure that you get the updates about the um, Worst First Streets program. And that's coming um, later this month. So lots of um, information that we'll be bringing to you for your consideration to set you up to make those budgeting decisions. Um, and then I also just wanted to do a quick shout out that um, MOFD had a wildfire prevention meeting last night. And they have another meeting tomorrow night to discuss the proposed changes to their maps to uh, uh, designate additional areas in Maraga as very high fire severity zones. So they'll have, it's a community meeting. All the information is available on MOFD's website. And it's also, um, we've sent that out on our About Town. So I hope you're enjoying our weekly issues of About Town and that you're finding them more informative. And um, you know, we're, we're active on Facebook, so, and Twitter. Oh, and I had a couple of other general things. Okay, so hold on a second. Um, there was a quick power outage today, um, because a car hit a power pole, but that power came back on right away. Um, actually, our public works department said, wanted me to share that. Um, we have doubled the number of permits that we've issued. Um, in the first three months or the first uh, two months of this year, we've already issued more permits than we issued for all of 2020 and 2021. So there's a lot of activity happening now, a lot of investment. Um, and uh, as you noted from the last About Town, we're bringing back all of our summer and spring event, events. And um, that's really being embraced by the community. So we're excited about that. And on Monday, our Balancing Act tool opened. So we still have our housing survey available. And then we have this new Balancing Act tool where we're asking residents and and people who work here as well to let us know um, where they want the housing to be. Um, so we will continue to make that available. Um, we've had, we're continuing to have a great response on the housing survey, over 700 responses so far. So that's great, but we're really looking for renters. So we can use help in that area. And that is the end of my report. Thank you very much.
You guys were so fast. I don't know, it was a photo finish, Mike.
Steve went, Steve was a.
Uh, just, just confirmation, uh, Cynthia, and and I think you, I heard when you talked about permits being doubled, you said public works department or was it?
Yeah, this is their encroachment permits.
I'm sorry?
Their encroachment permits.
Encroachment permits, okay. Encroachment permits.
Yeah. All the work that people are doing in the public right away. So we have, oh, it's, it's twice as many uh, this year as we did for the first quarters of 2020 and 2021. So a lot of work, a lot of investment. I don't know if it's in people's sidewalks or streets or storm or sewer laterals.
ADUs?
Nope.
No?
Nope, that's planning.
Well, I understand.
Steve?
I think we only have like three ADUs, so we're not, we're not seeing the big uptick in ADUs yet.
Yeah.
I I think it's where they're splitting the lots and putting in uh, eight.
We have not received any SV9 applications yet. I think two inquiries, but no applications.
Any other questions, Steve?
No.
Mike?
Thank you. Troublemaker Steve. I, yeah, I want to, I want to just understand where we are in the calendar. There's actually two calendars out there, just so that we're clear. I got a calendar hard copy in my package that did not say to hold the first and third Wednesdays. And you pointed out recently the link to me. So um, that is problematic. But if you're saying if a council member can't attend the Wednesday, first or third Wednesday for special or closed session, that staff will reschedule it. And it could be a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, next Wednesday, whatever. But staff will do their best to reschedule that meeting. Am I understanding correctly?
That is correct. But if a council member says it's fine, go ahead without me, then we'll make the decision whether to go ahead without them or not. So um, I think that there was some confusion because we did hear back from a council member who said, I can't attend and please go ahead without me. So, but if they want to attend, then we'll absolutely go find a date when everybody can attend. Because it's important that everybody be able to participate in closed session as well as special meetings.
Right. And so I think that's fine. And and also when we set these, if there's a way we can find out what the topics are, because that could be helpful.
You can call me anytime when you get a inquiry, if you're available for a meeting. If it's not in the email from Marty, please feel free to call me. I'm happy to speak to you about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does that clarify things, Mike, for you?
Sure does.
Okay, outstanding. Um, any other questions of Cynthia before we move on? Thank you, Cynthia. Some good news in there. Um, all right, um, Councilmember Macker?
Sure, thank you. I'll keep my report pretty brief. Uh, I, last week, like all my fellow council members, attended the joint meeting last week with the Planning Commission on the Housing Site Discussion. Those, that was one of the most clear presentations about Rena and the housing element. And I just wanted to call a, the attention to that. And for anyone in the public looking to really better understand and learn about it, that that presentation was fantastic to get that full overview. And then um, I've been doing my part, the best I can, to try to spread the word about the uh, Make Maraga Home survey, in particular amongst the groups um, that Cynthia mentioned, like renters. End of report.
Thank you, Sona. Teresa?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, mine will also be brief. Um, I, like Sona said, um, attended March 2nd's Town Council and Planning Commission meeting about housing. And I really want to applaud staff and planning and council, because that was a fabulous meeting. You know, I I don't know when I've attended a meeting that was so well put together and was so on target. It it was really, really great. Um, and then on the 6th, March 6th, I attended a Vir- Virgil, no, a Vigil, Vigil, thank you. Um, in Lafayette at the crosses for Ukraine. And it was, it was really pretty wonderful. Um, people spoke who were from Ukraine or had relatives in Ukraine or had worked in Ukraine. It was, it was really a, a, a good, um, a, a, um, community meeting. And it was at the perfect spot too, you know, the crosses. I I, you know, I've never really pulled over and spent any time there, but it was the perfect spot for that. So end of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Mike?
Thank you. Um, just very quickly, I mentioned uh, in in my conversation with the principal, John Walker Campo. This is the last week for masks at school and in-person musicals will will start um, as well. I attended the uh, community, um, excuse me, the Chamber of um, Commerce um, meeting, board meeting. Uh, they had a robbery in their office in Rehm. Uh, their office was ransacked. Um, their laptop was stolen, uh, the checkbook was stolen. So they were scrambling to get the checks changed and um, stop orders and sign new um, um, signature cards. So um, it it it's been uh, difficult. Uh, they're also been trying to set up a separate line for the Chamber of Commerce. Because now there is no phone line. So they just, so you know, they continue to be at the basics of rebuilding the chamber like many businesses are. Um, they are moving forward and trying to focus on the Maraga Citizen of the Year as well as the Maraga Nonprofit or Business um, of the Year. Um, they are working on a program and presentation as the council asked at the previous meeting to help Maraga uh, businesses. And they're um, talking with the town manager for input. On a related item, the um, New Delhi Bistro in Maraga has closed. Um, Community Service Day had a kickoff meeting um, last week with many items. And next steps will be to um, get a more detailed draft of projects uh, starting in early April. I too attended the Joint Housing Meeting, yes, um, very well done. And I thought people asked good questions. Um, and a lot of interesting new information and people talked about that too. And it's good to hear new information. Uh, I will share that I did talk to um, Jay Kerner and Dave Brizoni before that meeting. Because I wanted to get their input on what they thought of um, the report. Uh, as I'm here to listen to all stakeholders. Uh, and since I was asked to give direction, I wanted to take their comments into account. Um, okay, so now my last item here, you know, residents, you know, have asked about um, the agenda item that the town council approved with priority for uh, measure, measure K um, policy. Um, I see it's not on the agenda tonight. We've had other agenda items that didn't have priority as this one's had. So um, I think we need to have a discussion on this. And there's an agenda item in April that will let us have that discussion instead of um, doing that now, which we can't. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I want to talk about just one communication, uh, and that was with Scott Parker. Uh, all town council members, I believe, received an email from Scott uh, last couple of days. And I I was really impressed, uh, and and Scott was featured, I guess, in Lomar into Weekly and. And I, I was really impressed, uh, and Scott was featured, I guess, in Lomond Weekly in January. Somehow I missed that. Uh, but over a three-month period, he picked up years of trash over a range of locations. Uh, Los Trampas Creek area in Lafayette, moving up to Maraga. Um, Volger Canyon watershed area. Uh, Maraga Creek, uh. Uh, Laguna Creek. Or uh Los Trampa, yeah, Laguna Creek, uh, the, the. Lot next to uh the, the uh. The movie theater and also out towards Canyon. Um. He picked up a lot of trash. Um. And, and I um. I asked them, you know, well. Driver for it and, and, and it's just a, a question of being altruistic. Uh, he thinks that we really ought to have a better, better uh. Management of, of trash. Uh, he's interested in. You know, how, how can the town uh achieve that? Uh, and we, we had some discussions about that and that's gonna have to be an ongoing thing. Um. You know, be it annual or, or part of a community day that uh has been raised. And I think that's a potential opportunity. Um. The other thing, uh, oh, he wanted to uh especially recognize that he got help from a number of entities. Including the town of Maraga, uh, Public Works. And once he retrieved the trash from. Down in the creek and some of it was pretty heavy stuff. Uh, Public Works helped in, in, in uh disposing of, of much of the trash. Uh, some of it he took to metal recyclers. Um, very, very impressive. Um. The other thing I, I, you know, in, in my mind is that. We need to find a way to recognize uh people that uh take the initiative to do things like this. Um, you know, short of uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, a declaration. I've got some ideas and I'll pursue those as, as the year progresses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Um, so my report will be, it would be quick. Um, I was absolutely delighted to get the March third issue of About Town and to see all of the summer activities. That are coming back after a two-year hiatus, concerts, Fourth of July. All of the traditions that are bringing such joy to the kids in this community and to the families. So really looking forward to the summer. Um, I also attended the March second joint planning session uh on the housing opportunities sites with the planning commission. I'm gonna echo what others have said. The, the presentation was fantastic. So those of you. We had a lot of people on, online with us and really appreciate their participation. For those of you who missed it, it is, it was recorded and you just have to watch the first forty-five minutes. Um, and get, and just a terrific overview of, of what the, what the key considerations and issues are. And there is, of course, uh, as has been mentioned, continuing opportunity for public comment. There's the housing survey. Which we really encourage people to fill out. You can get to it through the website. Then there's this um. The balancing act tool, which just went live yesterday, uh, which gives people the opportunity to, to move houses around town. And that, those are not the only opportunities for public input. Every meeting that we have about this over the next year. With the planning commission and planning commission meetings are all public meetings. So uh there will continue to be information pushed out to the community and input will continue to be gathered in an active way from the community. Um, and then just on a personal note, um, I, I just want to say as the child of Ukrainian immigrants. I have been absolutely touched and moved by the community's support. Um, and um, and, and Teresa, thank you for going to the gathering in Lafayette. I was planning to go, but. Instead, I spent that day in the emergency room with one of my dogs. So um, in, in, and she's fine. But, but again, I, I just want to thank everyone in the community for, for their, their open hearts and their, their compassion and concern. Uh, that is the end of my report. Um, all right, we have public hearings next. There are none. Next item, ordinances, resolutions, requests for action, annual road rehabilitation, storm drain program. Pole of the council, would you guys like a five-minute break before we take that on or should we keep going?
I saw one strong, yes.
I, 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 yeah, and, and, yeah, I've got them. Okay, good. Thank you. Eight, ten. Let's reconvene. All right, we're back. Uh, we're on item ten A, annual, annual road rehabilitation and storm drain program. Uh, Sean, are you doing the staff report?
Yes, I am. So uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. So I have a brief presentation. There's an item for your consideration. To award a um design engineering contract. Um, but let's get into the short presentation and we can go from there. So I'll try to share the screen right now. Give me a moment here. So hopefully you see a full screen. That, do, does everyone see a full screen of the presentation? Okay, thank you. All right, so um, tonight, we're just, we're gonna go briefly. Uh, ARPA funding of our storm drain program, talk about some of the other things also in our storm drain program. Um, I, it was good for us to, I thought, to go back a little bit and kind of recap how we got to this point and what we've been doing. So we understand where we're going with the program. So uh, these are some photos from our uh Rehm Boulevard Cinco repair. It was a quite uh massive project. It's, it's the Cinco number two. Uh, which is some forty feet down below the, the pavement surface, as you can see. Yeah, gotta take multiple ladders to get down there. And let's see if we can get the. Get the. There we go. So if, if we can go back a little bit in time. Um, the town was diligently collecting information about the storm drain system and that. Uh, that effort started with the Maraga Storm Drain Master Plan completed in, in July of two thousand and fifteen. And that came up with a estimated annual budget of about seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Of capital improvements to fix deficient storm drain system and pipes. And that was based on an estimate uh of the system would also have capacity issues. That there are a number of undersized pipes, including the deficient pipes that were existing that would need to be upsized and upgraded. Uh, we, we then went into two thousand and nineteen and uh completed an addendum to the Storm Drain Master Plan. And looked more in detail, including doing extensive mapping of the system, which we, we pulled out. Pulled out those uh storm drain inlets and, and manholes. And, and got in there, identified size of pipes, locations of pipes, materials of pipes, lengths of pipes. As part of the update of the, of the master plan with the addendum. And we lowered the priority for capacity projects, revised our CIP uh estimates. And came out with a recommended five hundred forty thousand dollars annually in capital investments in the O M. Also developed a storm drain operations and maintenance plan, which uh would entail. Uh, inspecting about five thousand linear feet of storm drain pipe annually. Uh, prioritizing the high-risk pipes, which are corrugated metal pipes. And through our uh inventory, we were able to determine the amount of uh corrugated metal pipes and. And to our, you know, our good uh uh fortunes, the majority of the pipes are not. Uh, they're only about seven percent of the system are, are corrugated metal pipes. So that's the good news. Um, we also worked on how, how we were gonna analyze the information, how we're gonna analyze the pipes. What kind of systems we were gonna have in place and using the NASCA system of uh analyzation of pipes. It's used for strong drains and sewer systems. And we'll prioritize cleaning and maintenance work. Uh, kind of the preventive pipe work that would help us prevent the major issues by doing inspections, keeping them clean and operating properly. So we developed an enhanced storm drain program that would proactively start addressing these with a smaller budget. Okay, and so from our, you know, in twenty nineteen and twenty, um, twenty nineteen slash twenty. Physical years, we completed the management system, the database, the G I S database. We completed the mapping of our infrastructure by going out and determining where the infrastructure was and getting into our G I S system. Completed that twenty nineteen storm drain addendum. And then, then the town council allocated about three, three hundred thousand dollars to the twenty twenty-one storm drain O N in program. Which included a thirty thousand dollar contract to do inspections and cleanings. And from that inspection and videotaping, we developed. Uh, you know, a list of projects based on what we found out there and developed the list of projects, which you're now seeing. Projects coming forth through design and construction as we move forward here. So that, this was the initial investment of the town recently. To get the O N in program and capital uh improvement projects that result from these inspections going. We also trained our staff how to do confined space entry for the larger damper pipes and train them on the systems for rating pipes. Now, I, I wanna make it clear that, you know, we have a very limited amount of uh staff. We only have five. Uh, uh, maintenance workers, which we share between both our roads and our parks. And so uh this is, this training is really meant for emergency situations where we, we need to uh. Determine what's happening on a certain pipe or we want to be, you know, proactive. Uh, and we don't have time to go out and hire somebody to do something, but we have the in-house training to do that. And uh, we've gone ahead and done that to make sure our staff is safe. So here's some of the activities that we've been completing the last couple of years with the O N activities. Of course, every year, our, our staff in the October, November period will go out and inspect all this catch basins, storm drain inlets. Creeks that are in public property will inspect those and have those cleaned prior to the winter and prior to the storms. And then during the storm events, our staff are out there uh uh going across the streets and looking for our problem areas. And to make sure our storm drain catch basins and inlets are not clogged and flooding the street. So we do that so on a annual basis. And, and recently, we've uh had another inspection completed. Okay, as part of our twenty twenty-three street rehabilitation, which is our worst first streets. We've inspected all the pipes underneath those streets. And we're going through rating each of the pipes and determining which pipes need to be repaired as part of that project. We also have our annual inspections with a smaller contract that's also gonna be occurring shortly here in February. And then tonight, you're considering a, a proposal to do a much larger project with which will include inspections. Um, with the twenty twenty-one, twenty-three annual road rehabilitation, storm drain uh repairs project. We'll talk about that more a little later here. So, oh, ongoing O N in um activities. You know, our engineering maintenance staff proactively goes out and looks for uh issues that might be occurring. Whether they're on public property or private property to have their properly abated. We do have a number of uh times that we're called out by either by the public or we, our staff is out there. Sees issues and we try to proactively address those before, before they become bigger problems. We do send notification letters to property owners of their responsibilities, both on private and public. In our situation, we'll take care of those issues, of course. And this, this comes about from about twenty storm drain related inquiries that we have through via. Um, open rock or other, other means. So now let's talk a little better about, ARPA has been able to provide us this one-time opportunity for some major investments in our storm drain system. We currently have a part-time, limited durations, uh senior civil engineer running our expanded storm drain program. Which uh includes a number of projects that are funded through the C I P. And the adopted budget. And we also have uh into the future, we have uh forecasted projects and one of them will be. Uh, correlated with the item tonight. Um, potentially construction in the future. So we do have three projects currently that are funded. It's the drainage settlement and slide repair. The twenty twenty-three annual road rehabilitation design. And the Maraga Road and Hacienda Drainage Projects, both were in the current funding. And next year, if uh, if the council continues to uh allocate funds using ARPA. We have the uh, the construction for the twenty twenty-three annual re, uh, road rehab and, and storm drain repairs. And also uh Maraga Road and Hacienda Project. So the status of our ARPA funds uh for C I P projects. Uh, recently, the town council awarded a contract to current engineering for the Maraga and Hacienda Drainage Project. And tonight you'll be, uh, you're also tonight uh awarded a contract for construction management for that same project earlier in the evening. Um, at this current item that you're considering is, is awarding an engineering design contract for the twenty twenty-one annual road rehab. Storm drain repairs project. And also we're working on the drainage uh sediment study I mentioned earlier. We're working on the engineering consultant R F P for that project and that'll come to the council soon also. We do have a, a number of other projects that are funded through our uh storm drain impact fees. We have the town, town council just recently awarded a contract to C, C S G consultants and engineering design agreement. And also the town's been working on the Luden Creek Restoration Project Phase Two. Uh, we have an item probably that comes to you at the next meeting um to uh provide support for a grant application. Uh, to the uh Department of Water Resources for an additional four hundred thousand dollars. And we'll need a uh letter or a resolution of support for that project. But the good news about this project has been, we've been working diligently with Cal, O E S and FEMA. Uh, to uh, uh, in um strategize how the importance of this project. We've been able to increase the uh cost or benefit ratio of the project almost to two point oh. And they, the minimal level for funding is one point oh. So we're confident. After completing sixty-five percent giant uh design environmental work, that FEMA will uh hopefully be awarding us. The uh continuation of the design and going into construction. And we're waiting for that response from FEMA as they analyze what we've done for them. So the item tonight that uh we have before the council for consideration. Is a engineering design services for the twenty twenty-one street repairs. And what's really important about this project is, is the ARPA funding will allow us to do, to go out in. Um, videotape and inspect up to ten thousand linear feet of, of storm drain pipe. And that, that includes the seven hundred and sixty-six. Uh, seven hundred, seven thousand seven, uh, seven thousand six hundred sixty linear feet of the corrugated metal pipes. And, and also any nuisance pipes or pipes that are thirty-six inches or larger that we consider. Uh, critical that if there was a diff, uh deficiency there, that would, they would cause uh significant uh infrastructure damage. So uh, this is our most critical section with ten thousand linear feet of uh pipes that we can inspect with this project. It would really take care of the problem areas that we're concerned about and really understand what the condition of those pipes are. Uh, so they, the design contract would inspect these uh pipes, upload that information to the town G I S. Develop a, and log a prioritized uh uh rating for the wind pipes should be replaced based on the inspections. Given rating system, uh, we identify any kind of priorities for relocation of utilities. Most importantly, we bring back a, a engineering design recommendations and cost estimate for each of the pipes. That the town council in, in a formal report, as an assessment report, can review and prioritize the program as we're moving forward. And design and, and determine how much money we should be spending on pipes and what things could be de, deferred in the future. Um, and then the consultant would also prepare a design bid package for the estimated. One point one million dollars worth of construction budget, which is currently forecasted in the uh C I P. So the uh S A S recommendation is to adopt a resolution awarding the contracted professional contract to Harrison Associates. And that is the end of my formal presentation. I will stop sharing.
Thank you, Sean. All right, council member questions? Mike.
All right, thank you. By the way, I thank you for that walkthrough history. That was pretty helpful. I answered one of my questions. Um so this is ARPA funding for storm drains. Um and I just want to see if I have my understanding correct. So we had that really good detailed study in two thousand and nineteen. Didn't identify everything with certainty, but it identified a lot of what we had. And our plan going forward, I believe, was high priority items followed by medium priority items and sort of spacing them out um into future years. Now that we have ARPA, is it my understanding that we are taking advantage of ARPA, which when we did last year's budget? Storm drain was part of the narrow definition and now the definition's broader. With ARPA, are we now advancing future work that we were going to do anyway, but we were going to do it perhaps in a future period into the next two years? Am I correct? Or if not, could you please correct me?
May maybe I can take a first stab at that. This is that's okay, Sean, on a on a high level. So this is called your two thousand and one through two thousand and twenty three program. And what that is, is that is three years worth of cleaning, televising, determining what needs to be done, both reactively and proactively. And putting it into a larger scale project where we can get economies of scale. So so this is like a three year program and it's an incredible opportunity for the town to look at. As Sean indicated, that ten thousand linear feet of our most kind of uh vulnerable uh pipe. So one of the things that we included in the report is that there'll be a conditions assessment report that we're scheduled to receive in August of twenty twenty two. And that report will say, okay, well, we looked at all these pipes and given your one million, one hundred and eighty six thousand dollar construction budget, here's what you can do and we'll design that, design projects for those and that. Those docs documents will receive back in January of twenty twenty three. But we may come to you because if there's some additional pipes that really need to be repaired, it's an opportunity to uh do a change order to our contract with Harris for the additional design work. And add those those pipes to the January project and have a bigger project and really get ahead of this. And that's just going to put us in a much better position where we'll really be kind of leveraging that money to to catch up. And we've done a lot of work so far. I mean, I think the city is really well poised to invest the ARPA funds in our storm drain infrastructure because of all the groundwork that's been done. Did I miss anything, Sean?
Yeah, I think the thing we should really make sure is clear on is the the original two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen studies were studies. And they were looking at the the infrastructure that's in place. They weren't going in there and videotaping and analyzing and determining what the repair needs are. They were just, they were again, it's studied determining where your pipes are, what size they are, where they're located, what the material is. And identified, you know, our major need, of course, is, you know, in a quantified for us is the corrugated steel pipes because they've you know, reached their lifetime many times over. And some of those are very critical that we get in there and inspect and repair. And so we with a modest uh investment that the county council and did a few years ago, we got this program up and running. And we and from that, we've developed a number of projects that we designed and we're now going to go into construction as they've been awarded. And we have this rotation going in that we've got started with the modest investment. This ARPA fund would allow us to go inspect all the pipes that we have deemed very critical for inspection and make determinations if those need to be, you know, repaired now, tomorrow, in ten years or whatever. So we can make you confident about, you know, we're not going to have that next sinkhole if we can prevent it by being proactive.
I don't know if I'm quite there, but I'll digest that and maybe come back one on one. So the other question I had is, are we still comfortable? And you put it in your report that we need five approximately five hundred and forty thousand dollars on average annually to fund capital and operating storm drain activities. So put
I'll I'll take a stab at this first, and that is the information that we've gained from the one and a half years of programming that we've done has really been informative. And the information that we're going to gain from going through all of this, that as Sean indicated, they real life, you know, televising, cleaning, repairing is going to enable us to have better numbers um that are based on our actual costs in the past. So I think that, I mean, I think that we'll be able to hone in on that. But everything is getting more expensive. So it's really hard because what it costs to you know, do a particular pavement treatment to a street three years ago. When we were talking about, say, the worst first street program, those numbers are have completely changed. So I mean, I think that we're getting better information, but the world is changing. What do you have to say to that, Sean?
And that's very much true that we we're seeing increases in construction price um as we go along here. So it's not, it's not something that, you know, we we had inspected, but you know, it's it is how the atmosphere that we have out here is the drastic increase in costs. You know, especially in the Bay Area. So the longer you put it off, the more it's going to be, you know, that's that is the way of the world at this point.
But addressing the corrugated metal pipes, they're the most vulnerable part of our system.
Mm hmm, right. You know more questions?
Thank you, Mike. Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. And and I I echo, I'm I'm very concerned that the budget's going to have to be managed, the work scope's going to have to be managed because the the environment that you're going to be operating in is is going to be very, very tight and probably overheated. Um just confirming, and I and you've probably already stated this, but with what this inspection is focusing on is the seven thousand six hundred and sixty feet of corrugated metal or steel pipe.
That's the first primary uh you know, priority, of course, we will do all those pipes, but we do have a little bit of extra uh lineage here that we can address anything that comes up as far as a nuisance, anything that's known as an issue. We can also inspect that. So we are going to look at some of larger pipes that are not corrugated metal pipes, but that comes as the second priority. It allows us some flexibility to address issues.
And this is just on the public, public side, none of the public, private, correct?
All public pipes, yes.
Okay, and
Yeah, and basically I just want to reiterate that the town does not take responsibility for the storm drain system that is on private property. That's that is the property owner's responsibility. Okay.
Right, that posed some other questions, but not for tonight. Um the I I guess, and and if Harrison Associates representative is still here. I kind of like to get their feedback on how they're going to be equipped that as these inspections are done, if they spot uh conditions, you know, will they be able to spot conditions that you need immediate attention? How are they going to know that? And are they set up to to respond to that? And and you know, some of the 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 reason I asked that is that, you know, in twenty sixteen, when that eight foot corrugated steel pipe failed. You know, it took out with it a gas pipeline, high pressure gas pipeline and and a light standard. Or, you know, street lamp, light and traffic light and and you know, that's a really bad combination. And and it could have been not just a disaster, but but a tragedy. Uh we're very lucky that it did not light off. So I I'm not sure that we're going to know for sure, you know, when something's going to fail catastrophically. And you know, maybe answers are steel plating on top or or a a active inspection program to monitor something that looks suspect. I I I just like to get since they're the experts that are going to be doing the inspections. You know, can we get their their feedback and and also to get this out on the pub in the public so that any public that are watching on my streaming, they can hear uh this about this, because as we know, some of these corrugated steel pipes are not in very good shape.
Think that the only thing that I want to add before we turn it over to Harrison Associates is that um and correct me if I'm wrong here, Sean, but everybody knew that there was a problem with that large corrugated corrugated metal pipe under ream that that failed. That was that was a known issue, wasn't it, for the town? Because there had been some other issues in the area. So there were, we knew that there was vulnerability there. So there's, it's not like there's what we're addressing now is the remaining issues where there's vulnerability.
Well, be because that one failed, I think we can deduce that there are other ones that are in bad shape too.
Right.
Right. So so the question is, can we wait, you know, some period of time to to repair them in in logical fashion? Or do we have to do some kind of a remediation type of program such as frequent inspections or?
Okay, yeah, do you do you mind if I share the screen for a moment?
Sure.
Please go ahead.
I'll be quiet.
So this, hopefully you see the screen of the NASCO rating system. It's a criteria. It's it's very simplified. It's one, two, five. This is what our staff is trained. This is what is required of all inspectors to come into the town. They're using the industry standard that's used both for storm drains and sewer systems. As you can imagine, it's, you know, this is a industry standard which is quite rarely used. And it has this one, you know, zero to five rating system. And you know, number five, if if they put down a number five, it says it's going to fail or be failing very quickly. And so it needs immediate attention. So it's a red flag that we need to be doing something out there. So if any pipes that do the inspection process come back five, we will, we will adjust, you know, they, you know, they monitoring or they repair or they changing of, you know, that area to, you know, to protect it or protect the, you know, anything above it. So there is these, you know, these kind of flags and depending on how the pipes rated, that will give us an indication quickly of what we need to be doing. So this has been put in place just for these these reasons. And so I think, you know, we we have a system in place that it's going to tell us how we need to react and when we need to react. I'll stop sharing.
So without being pedantic, I sent you a photograph yesterday of a pipe that has pretty extensive corrosion uh through corrosion, the the pipe wall, is that a four or five? Well, can you say?
Yeah, I I I personally haven't walked it, so I wouldn't want to say what that that number is. Right, that's and that and that's where we have the the system in place that we will go inspect it and rate it appropriately. But I will say that I've been in much worse pipes and and that have have failed or will fail than that pipe that you showed me the picture of. And so uh our staff has been monitoring to that pipe and we've been out there a number of times. So at the at this point, we were comfortable with what's happening and we really like to get a contract in place and have it it officially rated through the system to make sure we were doing the right approach.
I agree.
Any other questions, Steve?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Mike, before I revert to you, any Teresa or Sona, do you have any questions? Mike, you're you you get you're up a second time in the inning.
Yeah, sorry for not having the patience to wait. Yeah, so Sean, it's just what you just shared was triggering what I was trying to articulate from back in nineteen and twenty. Which was, I thought we had gone through that type of analysis, your grade zero to five. And obviously, you're going to do five first immediate need, but then as he had grade four there, five to ten years. So you have a few years to spread those costs out. And then grade three was moderate and you have even more years to spread the costs out. You know, everything's a risk at the end of the day. So what I was, I what I thought we were doing with ARPA funds is like, okay, we had this plan. But now that we have this ARPA money and storm drains is one of our most important unfunded needs. Let's accelerate some of that work into the ARPA timeframe and let's get that done. That I I'm I'm trying to say it a little clearer than I did the first time. And I'm just trying to say, i- is is that conceptually correct? Or if if not, please help me understand.
But there's two things. If we can go back to our enhanced program, it's both a uh proactive and reactive program. The proactive part is we're going to go in there and inspect pipes and make determinations if they need to be repaired or not. The reactive part is the things that we've already seen that are failing. Uh we, you know, we we've gone out there and looked at them already. They're listed, a number of those are listed in the the addendum or the original twenty fifteen uh a storm drain master plan that have showed that there's issues there, we should be addressing them. And so we we have a, you know, then the Hans program has a list of C I P projects and it also has O N M to go out and do inspection. So it's a combined program. The ARPA funds will allow us to, you know, if we if we choose to use ARPA funds, it will allow us to go after those most vulnerable pipes that need to be repaired now or the next number of years and make sure those do not fail. Um you know, prior to that point. And so it's an opportunity to use those funds for the appropriate use of, you know, getting ahead of your infrastructure needs and before you have those major failures. Um so yes, uh we, you know, it's a, it's an opportunity and we're hoping that the councils, you know, will believe in that. And we have the program set up to implement it.
Okay, and as your report says, the corrugated metal pipes, which I think we all understood with risks. We were quite pleased to see in two thousand and nineteen, that's a very small percentage. Seven percent of our pipes are corrugated, as you state in the report. So that's the high risk, only seven. So then the variability around seven percent doesn't concern me as much because I've got a greater confidence and predictability in the other ninety three percent. So I I'm just trying to put it in perspective. So end of my questions. Thank you.
All right, any other council member questions? Um, if I may, I I I wanted to to ask about the sentence at on page four, the paragraph that says it's likely that the inspections will reveal more failing pipes that need to be repaired or replaced than the one point one eight six million construction budget for the project. Based on the conditions assessment report scheduled to be received in August twenty twenty two, the town could consider allocating additional ARPA funding to the project. And if I if I understood Cindy, what you were saying correctly. So I guess we we have a choice, right? We could we could maybe put aside a little bit extra right now in anticipation of there being additional needs identified. Or we wait until we actually have the hard data and have the analysis from Harris and and i- am I correct that that the latter approach is more prudent? Because then we we really know what we're dealing with here from a, if there is a a shortfall in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that you that the council isn't going to decide that they're going to spend all one point six million dollars of kind of unallocated ARPA funds in this next year so that you're going to set some aside. So that funding will be set aside and then come August, we'll come back and we'll let you know what the report is and potentially make a recommendation to, you know, modify or amend the Harris contract for the design services so that we can and and increase our construction budget so that we can really take care of all of the pipes that score five and really need to be repaired.
Okay, thank you. And so Sean, Elizabeth was here earlier. Is she gone for good or did she just blip out temporarily? Because I I just want, if if council members have questions of Harris. Is she gone for good? Or did she just blip out temporarily? Cause I, I just want, if, if council members have questions of Harris, I don't want to close questions before, um, I see if she's coming back or not.
Yeah, I don't see her on, on the screen here either.
Okay, all right.
And Madam Mayor? If I may, I just want to be clear that the item before the council tonight is not a budget decision. It's just the Harris and Associates award.
Yes. Were we, were we strange?
We were having a lot of discussions about budget allocations and spending money on ARPA funds and how we're going to line that up. And I want to be clear that the item on the agenda tonight is just for Harrison Associates.
Okay. Yeah, I thought, but I thought these were all issues raised by the staff report that, that council members were asking questions about. So I thought, I thought it was fair game.
We, but we've done great so far. I just wanted to remind everybody what the item is.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Uh, any more council member questions? Okay, public comment on this item. I don't see any raised hands. So I'll close public comment. Any council member comments? Teresa?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Sean, for all of your work. I, I, I just think this is so incredibly important. And that night, that rainy night, that, that pipe failed. Um, I talked to the guy who was fixing the light. And he said that his son was the dispatcher for the gas company. And when that light was failing, he called his son and said, get somebody over here right now. And I mean, that's how close we were. And had it not been pouring rain, you know, we could have had, we could have lost lives. So I just want to tell everyone how important this is. And, you know, thank you, Sean, for everything that you do to keep us safe. You've got, I, I know you've got our back and I'm glad.
Well, thank you for those kind words.
Sona?
I appreciate the diligence, um, in particular, you know, explaining in detail how the analysis comes together. And, um, appreciated all the questions my fellow council members asked to kind of understand the, the full contours of what we're, uh, deciding today. But I, I'll just echo that I don't think we can, we can sit on this and, um, would, would like to move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mike?
Yeah, um, the, uh, one, once again, um, Sean, I would like to add, thank you actually for your work on this. And, uh, before you, Edric, um, because, um, I, I do feel that we've got some very good information here. Um, using the ARPA funds on this agenda item, um, just makes a lot of sense. I'm just having, I'm just trying to connect the bigger picture and what's changed, um, and what hasn't changed. And I'm sure that'll become clear, um, in the, in the CIP. So, um, no, I'm, uh, I'm supportive. I think it makes sense. And as we go forward through the budget process, we can have other discussions. So thank you, Sean. And, uh, and Harris, who I believe has worked with the town multiple times, different division, but, you know, quality, quality, good partner. So, um, you, you've got full support here.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Do you want me to move it?
Uh, I, I had a couple of things I wanted to say, but Steve, do you have anything?
I was going to make a motion, but go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. You don't need to hear me talk. Go ahead.
You, you said you were gonna-
Yeah, I, I just, I, I want to thank, thank Sean. I mean, and, and, and echo what others have said. I mean, to be proactive on this, I think is critically important. And, um, and, and as we, you know, I, I just feel better that we continue to refine our knowledge, starting in 2015 and 2019. And this is putting a finer point on it. I also like, in, in looking at the Harris sort of project plan and, and proposal, there are a lot of checkpoints here and a lot of, a lot of places where, um, there is going to be reporting and accountability. And, um, i- this just strikes me as a project that is, that is going to be done very rigorously with great transparency and opportunity for council, uh, to, to understand what's happening. So, uh, so I'm, I'm fully in favor and I would invite a motion.
Teresa, do you want to do it or? Fine. I, I, I proved that we awarded professional services agreement for engineering design services to Harrison Associates Concord, California, at a total amount not to exceed 344,573 dollars, including 15% contingency of 44,944 for the two, for the 2021, 2023 annual road rehabilitation and storm drain repairs project CIP 21-205, and authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement. Sequoia status categorically exempt.
I second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Walke, a second from Councilmember Noda. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda? Was that a Yestries?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walke?
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, the motion carries unanimously. Um, Sean, thank you. Excellent work as always.
Thank you.
Um, all right, uh, 11 discussion items. There are none. Uh, council requests for future agenda items. Do we have any? We have none. Okay, move on to communications. That's just noted for the record, right? That we received this letter, though there's no discussion about this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, and so, um, then we are on item 14, adjournment. Teresa, my apologies, it's not 7:30, but it's not nothing yet.
It's pretty good.
Okay. What motion? Okay, second, Councilmember Macker, um, roll call vote, Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes, I'm not talking bad enough. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walke?
No, because we're not to 11 o'clock yet. Sorry.
You keep going.
Go ahead.
Steve, have a nice time.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, we thank you, everybody. Good meeting and-
Good night, everybody.
Thank you to staff. Thanks, Danielle. Good night, everyone.
Night.